Well, welcome. The time has come. We're gonna meet a candidate for school committee. Not somebody who has an opinion and won't help, but somebody who stands up and says, "I'm willing to work towards making Milford better for our kids." All forty-five hundred of them. So we'll start with an introduction.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. I'm Derek Sobers. I'm a Milford resident of thirteen years. I am happily married to my wife Emily. I have three beautiful kids, one seventeen-year-old Gabriel, a nine-year-old Aria, and a five-year-old Maxwell. I grew up in Millville, Massachusetts, only a few doors down from us. And I... geez. So I graduated from Blackstone Millville Regional, and I went to Community College Rhode Island. I got my liberal arts degree, and I got my certificate at Porter Chester Institute for Automotive. In that time, I met my wife. She was actually my neighbor. And we fell in love, and we moved to South Bow Street in Milford. And then we moved to Forest Street in Milford. And now we're over at Haven Street in Milford. We chose Milford because we love this community, and it's just been a great place for my kids to grow up. So right now, I work for Small Steps Therapy. It's a speech pathology, nutrition, occupational therapy, pediatric-centered provider. And I do senior support analyst there. And I also am co-creator and owner of Haven Beauty with my wife. My wife has a hair salon in Hockington. And so we keep it close and local here.
Well, I can't help your wife out because I don't have enough hair to need it.
I always say, "My wife doesn't do my hair because I don't pay her."
So how long you been married?
Oh, ten years.
Oh, newlyweds. Newlyweds.
Yeah, ten years. This has been a really... it's been a good year. We are... it's been a lot of work. We own a commercial building where the salon is, and we've been renovating the second and third floor. And just with everything going on, all the complexities of life, it's really... we've been a real unit. So it's been great. It's been a great bonding experience.
Sounds like a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is. I had transitioned from working out of Brockton, and I was spending a lot of time on the road. But once my son, seventeen-year-old, started driving, and he had to use my car, I ended up saying, "All right, I'm gonna work full-time over here." And so I kind of worked from home, and that extra few minutes has given me an opportunity to run for a school committee.
I love the short commute.
Yeah.
For years, I commuted an hour and a half each way, which was annoying.
Yeah.
Of course, the worst commute I did was Los Angeles from Milford. That was two, three times a week flying back and forth.
Yeah.
That was a long commute.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So I start the show and end the show with the same question. "Derek, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?"
Yes, I got the question. I love it. Al, I am one of your six loyal viewers, so I was ready for that one. I believe that as a parent here in Milford, and as having children in multiple schools, I'm invested in the school committee. I'm invested in the student body. I'm invested in the faculty and staff. I want my kids to have a great education, to have a great social environment, and I want that for all the kids in this town. I've been a soccer coach for all three of my kids.
Oh, wow!
Yeah, town soccer. And I was basketball coach for my oldest, and also a baseball assistant coach. And I was a Cub Scout dad. So yeah, I've been around. I've met so many different people. And it's inspiring to see how much hard work everyone puts into their kids and this community. And for me, being able to serve... I don't pretend to know everything. I don't pretend to know anything when it comes to this, but I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to do the work. And I think by having my own kids in there, by being just that invested into it, I should at least have an opportunity to give people a choice if they would like me to represent them and the community as a whole.
You know, I'd love to say I did soccer coaching for fourteen years for my kids. And that would only be half-truth. I got as much out of it because I was with my daughters three nights a week in soccer. And one night, we always took the team out to pizza or some kind of movie.
Right.
So you know, I've told people, "It's the best thing I ever did." Because I was with my kids. We started playing soccer in August, went through the winter, and ended in June. So about forty weeks a year, we're together three, four nights a week with their friends.
Yeah.
It was the greatest way to get to know who they're hanging out with.
Right. Right.
And what they're doing.
Yeah. Yeah. I love watching the competition. I love seeing the kids go for it, you know? That's what's exciting for me. Like, I'm the biggest fan. So whether I'm coaching my kindergarten or I'm watching my daughters' games, I'm usually screaming. I'm the yeller. I'm the fielder. And any of these soccer people watching right now, you know that to be true.
Well, you know, it was amazing because in our house, we had so many different levels. Because my two daughters played local, and we inherited four daughters over the years who played a much more serious game.
Right.
Because they played on the US national team and the Canadian national team.
Okay.
So when they talked about, "Oh, you're coming to the tournament, aren't you?" It's like, "Where is this tournament?" Well, London.
Right.
Because it was the Olympics.
Oh, gosh.
Or, you know, the World Cup. Talk about intense.
Right. Right.
You know, this was their life, so it was amazing.
Yeah, that is amazing. My daughter would love to have that story.
Well, the greatest thing was like, they'd come over for dinner. And I always told them, "You gotta work for your dinner." So I'd have them run my practice. So you know, the eight ten-year-old daughters are watching and listening to people they see on TV at the Olympics and the World Cup.
Yeah. Yeah.
The infuriating part was like the header drills that I had to scream and yell and beg and plead to get them to do. Oh, if Kerry said to do it, they immediately...
Right.
Going into the year, what do you think will be the three biggest challenges that you'd face on school committee?
Spacing is number one. I have been in contact with several of the principals of the town and different administrators, and they all say the same thing. We're out of space. That's the number one thing. And it's not an easy answer, what we do about that. But that is something that we... we're forty-five hundred enrolled. We're heading towards forty-six hundred. It's not going to slow down anytime soon. We're going to have more kids. And with that, we need to... it's not gonna get any easier. Right? If we're already out of space, what do we do? So yeah, that's number one thing that we have to work on. The second thing, I would say, would be teachers. We need more support. With more students, we need more teachers. And from what I've heard, the applications are down. We're not getting as many resumes. How do we... and we want to be able to retain those teachers that we do have. So how do we make sure that we are doing our best to recruit, doing our best to retain, for retention, for our teachers? The third thing would be infrastructure. For me, at least, I would say infrastructure. Again, I don't profess to know everything and all the answers to these problems or even... this is my opinion with these three things are. But I went for a tour of the high school, and there's buckets everywhere catching water. It's a little embarrassing, but at the same time, we know that if the infrastructure is failing, we gotta do something about it. And just trying to patch up these holes isn't gonna stop it. So there is change coming at some point. So those are my three big areas.
I laugh because when that high school was opened up, December of seventy-three, to go to the cafeteria, you had to walk between the buckets. Because that long corridor?
Yeah.
It was... the roof was leaking into these buckets.
No kidding.
I came back to Milford, went to see the high school. When my daughter went there, the buckets were still... So we've got a debate going on in town as to how to deal with space. For the longest time, for the first, I wanna say forty years that that school was in operation, we were averaging one kid, one net addition per year of students.
Right.
Because I remember when I graduated, I was the first class out of there, class seventy-four. We had two-twenty-two. A few years ago, we had two-sixty-eight. And then all of a sudden, the floodgates opened, and we're getting two, three hundred kids per year.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, we've got five major schools in Milford.
Yep.
Average of life expectancy is forty-five years, forty to fifty years. So every ten years, we gotta do something to keep up.
Right.
The next one on the list is the high school.
Right.
Have you had a chance to explore any options? Do you have any feeling for what we should do with the high school?
For the high school, for all the... for any of the schools, it sounds like they're... it's all hands on deck, right? There's all opinions, all ideas should be put on the table. So if I was on the school committee, I would have more insight onto these things. So it's hard for me as an outsider to be able to really assess it and tell you, "This is what we should do." I need to find out. I need to know more. I need to see how these conversations are really going and where they're heading. I've been door-knocking, talking to a lot of the people in the community, and some are super invested in that question as well. And some of them have ideas. I believe one idea that was... I've never heard anywhere else was talking about adding levels to Brookside, you know, and making that the middle school. And then being able to alleviate pressure on the high school and adding a grade over there. And oh, like, so to me, I'm like, "I don't know." We should probably get an architect and look at that, you know? What kind of things can we do over at Stacy? And then what do we do at the high school? Do we do a new building? Do we renovate? That's a question that is done by a team, not by one person. So I would reserve my opinion on that.
I think most people are very interested because whatever we do at the high school, if we renovate it, and I'm on record as saying I'm pro-renovation, it's still gonna cost us a hundred fifty million dollars.
Right.
So that adds about seven million a year in interest to our budget. If we build new, it's probably two-fifty.
Yeah.
So it would have a major impact on people's taxes.
I heard rent them was at three-hundred-and-thirty million.
Yeah. God.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the tough part is it's not just the cost of building, but let's not minimize what that would do to our budget.
Right.
You know, you start thinking about a hundred and fifty million dollars. You could have bought Milford years ago for that. They would have thrown in Hope Dale Amendment.
Right. Right.
You know, now all of a sudden, the costs are just astronomical.
It's true. It's true. I'm not... In that regard, it is a... How would I say? We have to do something, obviously, but we have to be very... I know that when it comes to the state funding for a school, they will do the numbers based off of what you have currently. They will go by your enrollment that you have right there. We know we're increasing. So how do we build a school to the numbers of today when we know the numbers tomorrow are going to be much more? So we have to take all these things into consideration. And so for us, regardless, the enrollment is still going up. The space is still getting smaller. And so we need to really make a good educated decision on this and do it pretty quickly. Because again, like you're saying, every year, enrollment is increasing by a tremendous amount. So we have to address it sooner or later. We can't wait.
Well, I mean, what you said was profound because the SBA, the School Building Authority, will not let you project
Right. Exactly.
and say, "We're gonna be adding two hundred kids a year, so we need this much extra geography." I mean, Woodland that we just finished four years ago is full.
Yep. Yep. Beautiful school. Beautiful school. But it is full.
It is full. And building new also has the downside that Milford High has a lot of square footage per person compared to what the state says you need.
Okay.
So when you add up how many square feet they're gonna fund, if we built a new high school, it'd be much smaller.
Okay.
And it wouldn't have a pool because they won't pay for a pool.
Right.
And you can't blame them. I mean, you've got towns and cities that are dying for renovation money for their schools, and you're gonna say, "Well, we're gonna eat up some of that for a pool." So the pool that we love and use all the time would go.
You're right.
Or we'd have to pay full price because if we're lucky, they'll give us fifty percent. And then there's this thing about no auditoriums.
Yeah, I heard about this. What's that about?
They won't fund it. You want an auditorium, pay for it yourself.
Just not necessary for them? Okay.
I think what happens is they have X dollars, kind of like your home budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, and your daughter comes up and says, "I want..."
Right.
"Yeah, I wanna buy dinner too."
Right.
So which one do we do?
Yeah.
So like Woodland, we have a thing called a cafetorium.
Right.
Where there's a stage at the end of the cafeteria. So we kind of get an auditorium out of it.
Right.
But it's not the same as the Davenport Auditorium. It's not the permanent comfy seats.
Correct.
So there's a lot of concerns if we built new. One big concern is where do we put the kids while we're doing it?
Right. Right.
You know, because if you're gonna build onto... Well, enough of my thoughts.
No, again, these are all the conversations that we need to be having. We need to know.
And that's what we're counting on the school having its own building committee and doing the due diligence.
Right.
Because if you're gonna build brand-new, you turn around and say, "Okay, where do you build it?"
Right.
The only place I know of that we have land is at the end of Asylum Street.
Okay.
And I can't imagine running school buses from Medway side of Milford all the way up to the Hope Dale side of Milford.
Yeah.
It would take forever to bus kids.
Yeah.
And you got one little Route 140.
That reminds me of, I believe, Uxbridge. They built their new high school. That was way out of the way of where they used to be, which was downtown. And yeah, it's way down on 146A, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they've managed it. But yeah, if you were to say, "Hey, we're gonna be down on Asylum," I'm like, "Yeah, that's a big change."
They ran in twenty minutes, thirty minutes to the ride. And then, I mean, we complain about big trucks like Amazon clogging the road.
Right.
You know, I mean, talk to LaGore about how many school buses he'd be running up that little street.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it'll be interesting to see. But I think what people are finally coming to the realization is there's a school coming.
Yes.
And when we put money in stabilization, people came to me and said, "You've been saying that for eight years." I said, "Yeah, I'll be saying it for eight more." Because as soon as Woodland was done, we started talking about the high school.
Right.
Problem is, the high school is the aircraft carrier of the fleet.
Right. Right.
It's the one that's gonna hurt the most building. But as soon as the high school's done, either Stacy or Memorial are gonna be coming our way.
That's right. That's right.
You know? Now, you talk about teachers. What's your ideas on how do we treat our teachers?
Well, teachers, that's everything, right? Like, that's... Imagine being a parent with your kid twenty-four-seven. A lot of parents have done that lately. And they're just like, "Wow, this is a lot of work." Well, teachers do that. They take care of our kids. They're educating them. It's hard to educate kids, you know? They're rambunctious, and it's hard... The fact that they learn anything is amazing. We gotta honor those teachers, right? We have to make sure we support them in the best ways we can. So I'm all for doing what we can to help them out. Hear them out, understand what they need, and try to support them in any way possible.
Milford teachers, I mean, we all, everybody believes that their family is special. Our teachers are special. But back, probably a little bit before people remember, two thousand and three-ish, when our budgets were really tight, many of the teachers around Milford and other communities were delaying their raises to help.
Right.
Problem is, if I can't afford my mortgage now, how can I afford a double hit at the end of the year?
Right.
I was amazed, and I still am, that the union, the teachers' union, came to us and to the FinCom and said, "If you promise you'll fight for us, we'll forego our raises this year."
Right.
So we'll give up our raise.
Right.
But you gotta promise us that you'll fight to keep that money, to save teachers. I was stunned.
Right.
You know, you never think of a union offering to give up benefits.
Shows you the care.
Yeah.
Yep. That's some care and that's some compassion for the mission. The mission is to educate. The mission is to create well-established individuals who eventually will go on to support themselves in society. So in order to do that, we need to make sure those mechanisms, those people, those teachers have what they need in order to do that.
So you're saying that our kids will someday go out and support themselves? When does that start?
That's... yeah, no, that's something I keep on saying over and over again. And I'm manifesting that with my son, you know?
Good luck. I have a thirty-five and a thirty-year-old, and haven't worked yet.
Oh, no.
Yeah, no, no, it's... But of course, you wouldn't have it any other way.
Right. Right.
You know, just when I thought, "Okay, we paid off the school tuitions and everything and helped with the house, helped with the..." Now she's going back to school for a PhD.
Pretty good.
Love it. But it's like, okay, doesn't ever end?
Did it ever end? Well, we like the fact that our kids have the opportunities to pursue their dreams.
Well, I mean, that's the whole thing. I mean, my family came to Milford in forty... well, thirty-nine. My mom came in forty-one. My dad came. He had had four years of school in Portugal because that's what they got.
Yeah.
After four years,
Yeah.
go to work. So the fact that I got a chance to do more is not lost on me.
Right.
My grandfather gave up being with his family. He came to Milford, and he would go back once a year to see his wife and three daughters. And you hear the stories of him living like a pauper so he could save every penny
Right.
and send it back to Portugal.
We'll do what we can for our family, right?
Yeah.
And sometimes it's really tough. It's really hard.
Now, talk to me about your ideas of infrastructure.
My ideas of infrastructure? Gosh. When it comes to the just maintaining and fixing buildings and maybe adding buildings, I don't have the ideas, right? Like, it's not... again, it's a team effort. It's something that I'd have to discuss to figure out, like, what can we actually do? What kind of budget are we working with? So that's not something that I feel... again, I don't feel comfortable saying, "This is what we should do." Because I don't know all the answers. I don't know what's in the works right now. I don't wanna be... I don't wanna step on people's toes who are doing that right now. That sounds like an amateur, and I am an amateur, right? And that's, I think, what I can add to this school committee is that I have open ears and open eyes, and I'm gonna listen and figure out the best answer for it. But I'm not going to jump the gun and tell you, "This is what we should do." And that's just my personal opinion. That's just how I feel we should go about things. I don't try to lead my kids astray. I like to be pretty... When I say something to my kids, I want it to be taken seriously. And I'm not gonna give them an unserious answer, right? So I have to have an educated answer, and I do not have that to give you.
If somebody was coming to Milford or considering...
Yes.
Because a lot of us who recruit people from around the country, when they come, the first thing they wanna look at is, "Will my child get a good education in the town I'm looking?"
Yes.
How would you answer that?
I'd say absolutely. 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 I know graduates from this school who've gone on to do great things. Academically-wise, I've seen it, and I've seen those who've graduated from this school system who've started their own trade, who have their own business. It's absolutely something that can... that happens here. And I don't... I have had these conversations prior to any school committee or run or anything like that. I've talked to people, and I've told them, "Come to Milford." There's a lot that they offer, you know? And you know, some people hesitate because, you know, I don't know how it happens, but there is sometimes a perception. And I think we need to break that perception, you know? Because there are so many, on an acute level, for each individual child, they all have an opportunity, and they can all have growth. So I... We offer a lot of different programs. We have a lot of different support for each kid in order for them to thrive. So I would say, absolutely, you can get a great education here. You come here, and you apply yourself, you can succeed. No doubt about it.
What do you say to the people who are worried that because we have a lot of immigrant kids, that the teachers are having to teach to the lowest common denominator, and they're not pushing all the kids in school?
I would reject that. I think it's an absolute beautiful thing that we have this immigrant community. This Milford is an immigrant community. It's been historically been that, every generation. We... and as you have said, yourself are coming from immigrant family. It doesn't stop, right? It doesn't stop with Italians. It doesn't stop with Portuguese. It doesn't stop with the Brazilians. It doesn't stop. It continues because that is... that's what brought me here. I grew up in Millville. It's a very homogenous town. I would have loved if I had more people who looked like me in school. It would have benefited me one thousand percent. And the world that we live in today is connected. We are connected to all walks of life. Milford has all walks of life here. Whether it be through class, whether it be through any economic background, it's here. And that's only going to help us. So to me, I don't want my kids going out into the world feeling ignorant of other things, other perspectives. And I want to be able to connect with other people. And I think that is something that other schools around here can't offer. We offer that. That is huge. When I was door-knocking, I was talking to a lady down in my neighborhood, and she's from East Boston. She said, "I chose Milford." Right? Like, she's like, "I chose Milford. It's diverse." And East Boston is diverse here in Milford. I could have gone anywhere in this area. I came here. And her neighbor, again, these are young families. Her neighbor said the same thing. He just came over from Mattapan, and he moved here into Milford. He said, "I like the community." This is a place where I toured it. I toured other towns. I toured other houses. And I said, "No, this is the place I wanna be." So whether real or imagined, I believe that the perception of Milford is changing. I think that we should be recognizing that diversity is our strength. And I think I can help represent that, to help change that focus to say, "Yeah, come here. Come here and look. We can do this as a community. We can do this together."
When I grew up, everybody was too busy living diversity to talk about it.
Right. Right.
It was one of the wonderful things that I found about Milford. You know, I grew up in the Heights.
Yep.
Prospect Heights. To this day, we still celebrate the six... Prospect Heights and to this day, we still celebrate the six countries where most of the people who lived in the Heights came from. You know, and it was funny because if you ever go over Water Street, I always called it the Great Unifier. Because we had Lubie Ave, we had the plains, we had the heights and there was a natural rivalry. But as soon as Wednesday night came to go to the Hope Dale Band Concerts, you had to walk over Water Street. You got to the top of the hill, you turned your hat, cause now your rivals were your family. Cause anybody picked on somebody from Lubie Ave, well, women, they're from Milford. Now, when we came home, the hat went back and get back to your side of town. But it was a lesson that always stuck with me that, you know, they're like cousins.
Oh, it's family.
It's family. When you're home, you argue. But when it really came down to it, anybody from another town that picked on a Milford kid.
You got their back.
We all bled red. You know, everybody bleeds Milford red, so you take care of them.
Yeah, I love it. I love it. No, that's that's so true. Like you said, in families, you can argue, you can bicker like that happens with me and my sisters. But I love them to death and I got their back, you know? Thick and thin. Like, that's how kind of community that we're building here. I I want there to be a rainbow coalition here in Milford. That is, uh, that is what I believe this Milford already possesses. We just have to make it shine. We have a day called Celebrate Milford. I love that day. I love what I love that it's named Celebrate Milford. It's in your face. It's right. It's plain. You don't have to, you don't have to imagine what they're talking about. It's Celebrate Milford. Not celebrate one, celebrate the other. It's Celebrate Milford. I think it's amazing. I think it's so simple and it's amazing and I love it. And that's that's it's again, the reason why.
And it's funny, cause you bring it up. We weren't Portuguese, we weren't Italians. We weren't Greeks, Polish, Armenian, Irish, cause those were the six main food groups that made up the Prospect Heights. We were all Milford kids. And god dang, if anybody picked on your brother. Now, you may argue with them, but you know, when we went anywhere, we went as a group. And I think that life lesson stuck stuck with a lot of us that nobody looked the same. The minute you heard a joke, I had to run and make it Italian before my Italian best friend made it Portuguese. You know, it was like, it was that edging that you did, but at the end of the day, they were my brothers. And I learned that from being in Milford. If you had a chance to study the standardized scores of the area?
A little bit. I've looked at it a little bit.
Cause a lot of times people will ask, why are Milford scores so much lower than towns surrounding us?
Yeah, we're we're not, we aren't like any other town around us. And we have a lot of different complexities here in Milford and so we got, we have to bring a microscope to it. We can't, we can't look at it in a broad in broad strokes. Because every child is an is an individual and every in every uh we we just we have, again, a lot to offer and that offering is diversity. Inside diversity of thought is diversity of of uh of we have a strong ELL department, right? The English Language Learner Department. We have a strong uh special ed department. We have a strong uh social emotional learning depart- department. So that having those those three groups already tells you that we have many different kids that we that we take care of. And to me, that is, that's an asset.
I was always proud, uh, the Middle School East. Principal down there, Tommy Daverin. I've never seen somebody take such prey at pride in his kids. And he made it known to people. You bring your child to Middle School East, I'm gonna take care of him. So I remember going to him and saying, Tommy, why do your MCAS score suck? The look on his face is like I attacked. And he goes, cause you're ignorant. I said, great, educate me.
There you go.
And he did and he showed me, he goes, I'll put my top kids up against any town surrounding us. Problem is, we have a bimodal distribution. Our top kids, the Gaussian curve is as strong as anybody's. But then we've got the second curve, kids who are just learning the language. And you know, and he laughed. He says, if I put you in China and said you have a year to learn Mandarin and then take a test, how well do you think you would do? So you know, it's like that kind of pride, love for the kids, I think is what drives this town.
And that also helps, that's also goes towards the point of supporting our teachers. They have a hard job. And if we can get them more help, uh, just to help with with the new new enrollments that might not speak the language. We need to do everything we can to help those kids, because guess what? Once they do learn the language, they're bilingual and that is a huge asset to the town, a huge asset, a huge pride, prideful moment that we can have. So yeah, I I think it I
I remember coming out of the house and coming back home saying, Mom, why do these kids speak funny languages? Cause I had never spoken anything but Portuguese. I didn't even know it, Derek, till my fiancee came home once and said, do you ever speak to your mother in English? And I said, of cour- No.
Right, right, right.
Only when there's people who don't speak Portuguese. And in the Heights, there was very far and few between that didn't. But it was amazing that you got out there and very quickly you learned this new language, English. And like you say, I've been bilingual my whole life. You know, and it helps.
Right, right, it does.
Few years ago, we faced a problem. We were presented a program of adding SWAT capability for the schools to Milford. Six hundred thousand dollar program. Any thoughts?
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year.
Well, it was less than that every year, but initially it was six fifty. Then you had four, well, you put four cops and their average with benefits is a hundred some thousand, so it was half a million a year.
Uh, and that's a response team. So they're responding. So as of right now, the program's been in been in in existence for what, three years maybe?
Three or four.
Three or four years for a response team. Have they responded to anything? It's been good to have peace of mind, but that's an expensive peace of mind.
Yeah, the tough part was they presented us with the fact that we can have the regional SWAT team that we're part of in Milford to respond within forty, I think it was forty-two minutes.
That is a very long time.
And the average incident was over in eighteen. So I remember looking over at our chairman saying, Chris, God help us if we say no. I can't imagine facing the parent. But in general, do you think Milford's a safe place to bring your kids?
I I I do, Al. I I believe Milford is a safe place to to bring our kids and and when you, when you, as a segue from from talking about a a SWAT team or SWAT team response, I don't think any of these communities have had to deal with this, these these acts of violence have ever considered them their community to not be safe. Right? They weren't ever expecting that to happen in their town. I think it's great that we can help prevent that, but I also believe we have a very capable local police department. I I believe that uh nine nine times out of ten, the the perpetrator is usually a student, right? I think if we're going to spend half a million dollars a year, every year for this response team, I would kind of like it if maybe we allocated maybe those funds to the school committee, uh, school budget and maybe invest in mental health and that invest in social emotional learning so we can be proactive and help kids who might be struggling. Uh, it's just a thought, but I understand what you're saying about about you don't, how could you say no? I can say that about a lot of different things, you know, um, so I I'm I guess I would have to look at, look at it, but I just can't imagine that that I don't want to, I don't want to envision a time where we need that, right? And if we and and if, but I don't wanna put my head in the sand either. So I do, I do want to investigate that a little bit more, but I don't know if that's something that's really necessary. For amount, the amount of money that we spend in this town, uh, and the needs that we have in this town, if that is what we should be doing with our funds.
Yep, I don't know how to evaluate it. I'll admit, I was scared to death to say no. Cause I kept thinking, how would I ever forgive myself? But I mean, we've had two demonstrations in Milford about our police force. Both positive. And that makes me feel good. Cause you got the community and the police knowing each other.
Right, right. And that's great. I have I have uh officers who are my buddies, you know? And I I respect the heck out of them and I think they're well-trained and and I think they're capable. So I I think that if there was something happening at the school, that we have a a team already that could handle that. So yeah, I think that that would be more my my answer is that we should leave it in the hands of our local department.
I've stayed away from the whole topic of COVID. Till I wanted to make sure we had time to go through everything else.
Yes, yes.
Cause somehow whenever we've gotten on the topic of COVID, it seems to take up the whole, you know, it's like an ideal gas law. It expands to the volume provided.
It's an amazing moment in time that we're in right now. And it is, it is a it's one of those things where if you're to ask, if you're asking about like the between the schools and COVID and what do we do and well, as of right now, we're on, we're on February school break. Kids will be back next week. There's not going to be a mask mandate for them when they come back, except for the school buses. How do I feel about that? I feel like after the, after the January break, uh, after New Year's and Christmas break, we had a spike. I would have visioned that after this break, we might have a little bit of uh of that again. Throughout this country, we have lost over eight hundred children due to COVID. You wanna talk about how could, how could we, like, that? Every eight hundred families have been destroyed. We have to take it seriously. So it does take up a big, it does take up a big conversation, uh, time in the conversation because it's a, it's a big deal. I also know that my son is in kindergarten and he has no idea what it's like to be in school without a mask, you know?
That's amazing.
Exactly. So I feel for that too. And I feel, I feel for these, for these the students, I feel for the teachers. It's a, it's been a horrible, horrible event. So as we go back and we don't have a a mask mandate, I'm just crossing my fingers and hoping that we that we've made some good decisions and that it works out. I'm re- I'm ready to get past it, but for me to say that, it's it's of of, it's a privilege for me to say that. Some people haven't gotten past it, right? So I think we, it's it's a deadly, serious topic. But
Have the school committee mandates been appropriate in your mind?
I think the school committee has done exactly what they're supposed to do. They listen to the experts. They've listened to the state board of health. They listen to the town board of health and they've listened to the administrators. What out like, you're outnumbered three to three to one. You might wanna listen to what they have to say. Because I'm, again, I'm here, I'm here to listen. I'm here to learn. I'm here to be uh the bridge between the community and and the administrators, the faculty staff and the student body. So for me to 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 do my job ac- uh accurately, it's and appropriately, it's to take in those experts, expert analysis, what they determine to be the right thing to do. So I can pontificate all I want about what I should do, need to do, and I think we could do. But the the truth of the matter is, we have to look towards those experts and they have decided that when we come back from February vacation, that we will not be wearing masks except for the school buses. So
As a parent, are you comfortable?
I, it, what's tough is I have a nine-year-old who she had, she has got uh COVID. She was fine. She had just a little sniffle. But she tested positive. My younger son has not, but they're both vaccinated. I can only do so much as a parent. Once they get on that bus and they go off to school, if he decides, yoink, mask comes off, I can't do anything about it. And the teachers can't do anything about it either. However, I want him to be comfortable. If he decides that he wants to not wear a mask, then he doesn't wear a mask. It's really hard for me to say that about a five-year-old. But this is where we're at and there's a lot of hard decisions and hard choices that parents have to make. And I I just, I just hope that that vaccine works, because if he does contract it, I'm gonna be a mess.
Yeah, there's something about I can get as sick as sick can be. And it doesn't hurt as much as watching one of my daughters get the sniffles.
Right, right.
You know, and now I got granddaughter and a grandson and I didn't think it could be any worse, but it is. When they get sick, it's like the inside of me is being pulled out. But you said something profound. You can do what you want, but the minute they get on the school bus, they belong to the school committee.
Well, not the school committee.
School committee sets policies.
They do, they set the policy, but the policy is also something that we also follow through the the experts. So, yes, I, it, it's a brave new world and we have to adjust.
Now, you also mentioned that we spend a lot of resources taking care of our special needs kids. How do you think we do?
I think we do great, but I think they also need more support. I I I've talked, I talked with uh uh Director Lucy Jenkins about this. She 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 readily admits that they're short-staffed. They need more support. So we should support that. We should, again, it's when we're talking about space, the lack of space, that that again, makes it very difficult to say we need to add on staff, but can we retain our staff? Can we add on uh extra, extra help in those classrooms? That's to me where we should be focused on until we can actually get more space. So that that's, that's how I feel about the special education and 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 the other specialized departments that we have. We need to support them. We need to, needed to strengthen them.
Well, it's no secret that Milford has one of the strongest special needs programs around. How do you respond when people, cause this has come up many times? We're spending so much money on special needs kids. We're attracting families to Milford and there's school choicing in from other areas to take advantage of it.
What a compliment, right?
Thank you.
What a compliment. People are looking around and they're saying, Milford's got it. I don't, I don't see, I don't see the issue.
This is my problem. I've said, if along the way of helping Milford kids, we help kids from other towns? I don't have a big problem with that. And someday, hopefully, when I take the bus north and I get in front of the pearly gates, the worst thing I would hope they'd say is you were too supportive of kids. Now, if I get suntan lotion and and a towel and I see the bus heading south, I got a bigger problem. If you had a chance to add one program to the Milford school system, do you have any idea what you'd do?
I've thought about this for a good while and I honestly, again, going back to that last, the last question, it's whether or not I want, I would want to add on anything, we can't at the moment. We don't have space. What we can do is firm up what we already have. To me, that is important. Could I say, hey, we could have more clubs, more things like robotics and stuff like that and just do, yeah, that'd be great. Can we uh improve on on career readiness? Yeah, we could do that too. But we have to exist in what we have right now. And to me, that is firming up what we have. And that that would be my answer is, we can't, we can't worry about that at the moment. We have pressing, pressing issues right now that go with uh what we currently have.
So where should we start to look to focus our energies? I mean, th- this year, we're lucky. Cross fingers, the governor's proposed budget adds seven million a year to the Milford school system. Finally, we understand they've redone the formula and they're taking into consideration that it costs more to support special needs kids. It costs more to support ELL kids. So ours chapter seventy money has gone up seven million this year. All of that's going to the school. And I mean, you got people growling saying nine percent increase. And I mean, you got people growling, saying nine percent increase is a huge number. But.
Growling?
There's certain factions in Milford that don't wanna spend as much as we spend on our schools.
But that's state funding, that extra nine percent, correct?
Yeah, but it's not, it only pays for forty-three percent of the cost of education.
Okay.
So you could absorb it.
Right.
You know?
Well, again, support our, support our teachers, support our faculty, support our staff. It trickles down to those kids. Let's support the kids. There's, there are so many different things that we, that we do throughout the town and the state and, you know, federal government with, with spending. I have no problem spending when it helps our kids. You know, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't know how you can growl at nine percent increase. I say, nine percent ease increase. That means that we can make sure our, our teachers are, are not looking elsewhere, trying to go somewhere else. That means that we can maybe add in another, uh, staff member who's bilingual. That means that we can ha- ha- add in. Uh, someone else onto, uh, uh, the special need, who has special needs. We can, again, firming up what we already have. And, and just making it more robust, like, if that's a nine, if that nine percent is allocated to the school because of those special needs. Then we should allocate that money to the special needs.
And that's the proposal that, as we've started to go through the school budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can't argue that they don't need it.
Right.
The alw- the problem has always been the balance between, you know, the people who built Milford.
Yeah.
A living, a lot of them on fifteen hundred dollars a month social security.
Right, right.
So you can't keep increasing the budget, cause you're gonna make them decide whether they eat or they pay their taxes. But this year, and hopefully next year too, we saw a huge increase in what the state said. We're, the state legislature, our representative, Brian Murray, came out and said, Milford is a gateway town. You think of gateway cities, you know, Far River, Farreeve, N- New Beige, New Bedford, all those areas. But Milford's got all the same issues.
Yeah.
Just on a smaller scale.
Yeah.
And the House of Representatives is targeting cities with large ELL population. Large special needs population and large low income.
Right.
Milford hit all three on the dot.
Right.
So we got a huge increase. There's towns around us that got flat funded or just a little bit. So it made it easy to do the right thing this year.
When that's, it makes it easier to do the right thing. Um, I like to see like how that. It goes with the, 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 the budget that the school proposes and, and like what, how that works out. How much of that nine percent does eat, is, is taken up by that? Obviously, you gotta take that nine percent and. And use it in that, in that way towards the school, to the school. But at the same time, when you're saying you don't wanna take away from, from the seniors. I'd also say, well, there's other areas in town that, that we maybe ne- need to look at, that's outside of school. Like, we, I know that we do a lot of TIFs in this town, correct? How much does that add up to?
Not enough.
Not enough?
No, because the TIFs we do.
Mm-hmm.
The ones we've done, I've supported.
Right.
Because it has to be concrete.
Right.
Like, we had a company come in that we gave a TIF to. They built a building.
Right.
So that adds to the taxes.
Oh, yeah.
The ones I've not been in favor of is when they say, we'll increase employment. You know, world peace will be better. It's like, yeah, well, I can't eat or measure world peace. But if you're telling me that you're gonna build a building.
Yes.
Um, and this, there was a company that left Milford after three years.
Mm-hmm, but the building stays.
Building stays.
Building stays.
And that's why I've always said, if you're gonna add to my tax roll.
Right.
I'm gonna look with a favorable eye.
Right.
Cause even if you leave, you lose your TIF.
Mm-hmm.
But the building stays, somebody's gotta pay those taxes.
And I'm okay with that, right? I understand, I understand that. But like you were saying, there's others, there's other tests that haven't been like that. And that, and for people who don't know, a TIF is, is, you can explain it better.
Tax incremental financing.
There you go. So it's like giving a tax break for, for.
But only on new. If you're, if you're paying a hundred dollars.
Okay.
You got a building, you're paying a hundred dollars a year.
Yep.
You're gonna expand the building. So now your tax is gonna be a hundred twenty-five.
Right.
The TIF is on the twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. So yeah, it's a little smaller than, 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 than it, it looks.
But again, it's not on the hundred you're paying.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't lose anything.
Okay.
And I think that's the, the part you have to really focus on is, again, talking about world peace, that's great.
Right.
But I can't measure it, I can't eat it.
Right.
I want to know that that in ten years, the building starts generating.
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars more.
Yep, yep.
And if you leave, it generates twenty-five instantly.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, I mean, there's different places that we have to look and be very cognizant of what we can harvest.
Right, I agree. I agree.
You know, now. Overall, we're not doing too bad, I think. We've had fourteen years of a surplus. I mean, last year, we had eleven million dollar surplus, but seven of it came from the feds.
Okay.
But we've been averaging three-ish million a year for the last thirteen, fourteen years.
Yeah, yeah. That's, where you, where you, where you putting it?
Well, that's always the debate.
Mm-hmm.
Typically, we've given twenty-five percent back.
Okay.
So we've given between two and four million dollars against the tax rate.
Okay.
Cause it's coming from the taxpayers.
Right, right.
So it's only fair, you give some of it back.
Yeah.
We put twenty-five percent or so into long-term savings.
Right.
So that when the high school comes.
Or a water company?
And then we look at things that we normally couldn't fund without hurting the budget.
Yeah.
And put another twenty, take that twenty-five and spend it towards articles.
Right, right.
So, so far, so good.
It's not bad.
Well, now, Derek, I'm from Milford.
We're at that point already?
We're at that point already.
Wow.
Why should I vote for you?
Uh, thank you, Al. Uh, I think, I'm asking for pe- uh, people to make a choice. To decide if they want to vote for, uh, someone who is a, an, a parent. Of an older kid, a younger kid, who is of the community for the last thirteen years. Someone who can help represent this diverse community. I think that is important. I think that helps that when you go on the, if you went on the school committee website and you were to, to look at the pictures. I think it'd be nice to have someone who actually represents the student body too, who looks like the pe- the kids who are there. Like I said, I grew up in a town that did not have that. And, and, and it would have helped for, for those pa- uh, parents. That are trying to make a decision whether they want, uh, well, what's going to happen with a high school? Whether, will their child have, be in a new high school when they're in kindergarten? That's, those are things that I, I am personally invested in. So for me to represent not only the body as a whole, a diverse body, but as, actually also help out with. Uh, uh, give a perspective of a young parent and an older parent at the same time. I think it's a little bit more, uh, uh, I'm encompassing on that. And I, I just want an opportunity to serve, because I have that. It's really, really hard for parents to, to get involved. I'm saying, I'm, I'm willing to do the work. Uh, it's gonna be a little, it could be a little messy and boring and it can be, you know, it's just like, oh gosh, it's a lot of work. And I understand other parents saying, no, I don't have the time. I have to make, I have to make dinner, I have to check my, uh, do this, I do that, do my, my own job. I get it. I'm saying that I'm willing to do, to be that person.
I thank you for being one of the people, my, I tip my hat to people like you who not only have an opinion. But are willing to back it up by helping to make it happen.
You're an inspiration, Al. Appreciate it.
I'm just old. And as always, to our six loyal viewers, I thank you for joining tonight. I've always promised never to ask you to vote for a specific candidate. But always the privilege of begging you to get to know the candidates and get out and vote. So please, when the election comes, pick two candidates for school committee. And for those of you who don't have kids, don't think it doesn't affect you, because the price of your house. Is really directly related to the quality of the school system. So as always, thank you for joining. May God bless and may tomorrow be a better day than tonight. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.